So, good afternoon, everybody. My name is Sandra Schaefer. I'm the president of the Democratic Women's Club of Greater Broward. And one of the things that I like to do is to interview the candidates and give them an opportunity so they can fully develop their platform to, you know, to their constituents and the residents. I've seen a lot of the town halls. I've seen a lot of the sessions that they have when they have more than one candidate. And I'm not saying that that platform and that setup works for some. However, there have been times that, you know, questions have been asked and they only get 90 seconds to answer a question or at the most two minutes to answer a question. And sometimes I don't think that's enough. So, I give all the candidates an opportunity to come talk to me so they can fully develop their plans so the people in their respective jurisdictions and will know who they're voting for and why they're voting for that particular person. My whole thing is about having informed to be an informed voter. Alright, so this afternoon, I had the pleasure of interviewing chef Michelle Jones. She's running for a commission seat in Tamarack, Florida. So, I've spoken enough. I'm gonna give her a chance to introduce herself and then we're gonna start with this interview. Yes, it's your turn. It's your turn. Introduce yourself to the people.
Alright, hello. My name is Michelle Jones. Everybody knows me in the, in the community as Chef Jones. They've known me as the teacher. Well, a lot of time, well, a lot of people didn't know I was a teacher until, you know, I think a few years back. But I have been teaching culinary for the past 15 years in the Broward school system and also in the Miami school system. Now, my job is I work with the vocational rehabilitation and Florida Department of Education where my job is to rehabilitate people and put them back in the community and find them jobs and help them just to get back into community. Doesn't matter whether they have mental disability or learning disability. And in with the Florida Department of Education, I work with the teens with pre-employment services, mentoring. That's my job and it's what Florida Department of Education. My master's is psychology and social development. I have a bachelor's degree in culinary art and education. And I am a teacher, I'm a mom, and that's Michelle. I, I, that's me.
Okay. Also, the first question I always ask is like, you know, why, why would you, why did you decide and what made you wanna run for public office, right? This is one of them things that folks are all in your business. I've had an opportunity just past year to, you know, meet a lot of first-time candidates and it's grueling. It's something serious, particularly for women and women of color. So, why is it that you decided to run?
I'm, I'm gonna tell you this. You know, the other day, I was having a bawling spree here with my mom, that poor lady. I just start crying out of nowhere because there's so much pending up, you know? And I, and she goes, I said, "Mom, if I..."
It's okay to cry, people. That's not a sign of weakness.
No, no, it's just like, there's so much. I was like, and my mom says, "If, if you knew the journey, you wouldn't have traveled it." You know, because it was so much. I was like, "This is just really not me. I'm not used to this kind of backstabbing and I'm not used to that." It was never something that I, it's not a personality. I'm a giver, you know? That's how I've been in the community all this time. So, it was like really shocking to me to see all of this hate and all of this anger and all of this that comes from everyone. And it's, it's just, it's very tough. I'm not, it's really hard. And then not only that, as a woman, I get a lot of, you know, comments, nasty comments from the men about me running. Some of, I mean, my candidate told me to go home and cook. And so, you know, things like that. And, and I get really like, "Welcome to the boys' club." You're stepping in a, a big shoes and, you know, or a man's shoes or something. There's always some comments about me being a woman. So, that, that definitely have an impact and I see it. I really do see it.
And that's interesting because isn't like, um, three of the other commissioners in Tamarack are female, right? You guys have five, right? But there are three females and two men of color. So, how is it that they're sending you home to cook? I don't understand.
I don't, I don't, I don't know. I have no idea. I, I don't know. I don't know. Maybe because I'm a chef.
Tell me your food's good. You can cook and you can...
I think one of the things is downplaying my education and downplaying who I am is to make, is to make the community think that I, I'm a cook. And, and pretty much that's what you hear from people. She's a cook. And then for me now, I've never been one to walk around and pat my shoulders about my, my, my education and all my experience because I never really had to. And, and for me, I, I don't feel like I have to always explain myself and, and use my education or anything to, to, to be relevant to people. It really never mattered to me. I know who I am and that really what was, that was mattered. So, now people want to know who I am. They want to know that I have the experience to run, to be the commissioner in the city. And I think, you know, working in the juvenile system for seven years and working in the school system and for so many years, I think I'm more, I have, I definitely know that I'm more, I have more experience to run the city than even the person that's there now.
Okay. So, we talked, you talked about like how tough it is to run, right? You talk about how tough it is to run, a lot of the obstacles. I mean, maybe it's not an obstacle, but a lot of the challenges that you're facing, the hurdles that you, you have to overcome in order for you to run. But what made you decide to do that besides like what's happening now that you're in it? But what was it that made you say, "You know what? I wanna do this for the residents of Tamarack"?
Because I love the city of Tamarack. I honestly do. And what I saw in the city, what I saw when I went to the commissioners meeting and what was going on, I saw the division in our community that was going on. And I think that we can approach it a different way. That was my biggest thing. My biggest thing was like, this is not, this is not the way to approach this. This is not the way to get a cohesive community by us fighting, by watching the commissioners fighting. I mean, it's, it's, it's just, it was, it wasn't, for me, it was very hard to see. And that, that was something that, and not, not only that, but it's, it's been a while since people have been telling me, "Michelle, you should be running for commissioner in the city. You're so wonderful with people. You're always helping people. You're always finding people jobs. You're always putting people together. You're always there when the nonprofit call you. You're always there when the candidates need you." And I've worked with the candidates throughout the years in Broward County. I've worked with many of the candidates, providing students for them, providing things for them, whether it's jerk festival, whether it's their elections. They've always come to Chef Jones for support. And so, I did expect that. Unfortunately, that didn't happen. So, you know, that, that for me was kind of surprising as well. So, that's why I wanted to run because I truly care about my community. I've been here for a long time. I raised my son here between here and North Lauderdale. I raised my son in this community. I bought my first home here in Tamarack in, in 2019, 97, I think, or 1998. I know they usually check these things. And Shaker Village at 20, never forgot, 21 Pleasant Hill Lane. Over in Shaker Village, I owned my first property. That's where I bought my first property in Tamarack, right? Soon as I got married. So, I love the community. I see it's growing. I see it also struggling to become something else, you know, to, to, to adapt. The changes in, in the demographic. The changes in the demographic, I see that it's struggling. But I see that what we can do, what they're starting to do now is having a lot more programs that, that is affect, that relates to the community, which is very good. And I think that's something that Tamarack was missing because Tamarack was always predominantly Jewish and white. So, now that the, the, the community is getting so different and getting so diverse, you know, I think that we need people that are going to bring that kind of representative to the community and not more of that bitterness and angerness that's going on. And that's what I see in, in our committee, why I decided to run.
Okay. So, the, for those who don't fully understand what it is that a commissioner does or like what your responsibilities will be if you make it on a commission seat, tell us, what is it that a commissioner does for their city?
Well, I, well, one of the biggest thing is the budget. And I, I, I listen to the people.
People ain't got no money. We've been working for seven months. Like, what, what, what does budget gonna look like? Where does the money come from?
Where does the money?
Yes, where does the money from the city come from that, you know, everyone's having a hard time now?
Well, the money come, well, you know, the money comes from the people. The people and their taxes. You know, so I, I'm not understanding what you say. Where's the money?
So, so, so I will, I want you to answer your first question first and then we'll get into the other stuff. So, the thing is like, for people who don't know what it is that a commissioner does, what is it that they do? One of the things you said is that they're, they're dealing with the budget. I've spoken to other people that are running for commission seats and I know that the budget is gonna be a challenge, right? Because they're getting it from taxes and, you know, and then some, some of the cities, maybe your city is different, they have more renters than they do have homeowners. So, they always have a struggle with money, right? And now, we're in a situation where, you know, people haven't been working since March because of COVID. So, I mean, budgets are gonna look very different in like another year. So, like what, you know, they're gonna have to be creative ways to figure out how expenses are gonna get paid since a lot of people, because of what the effects of coronavirus, people are not making as much money, people are not really going out to restaurants anymore. I mean, businesses are closing. So, money is gonna be very different in another year. I mean, the budget for this upcoming year might be okay, but I think a lot of the cities are gonna face some challenges because of the economic impact of, of COVID. So, that's what the question was about.
Well, I saw the last, the, sorry, the last, um, the last meeting that I was looking at, one of the things that I saw, I saw the city having, starting a lot of cutbacks. I, I did see that they're starting to get early retirement. For some people, they're cutting back on a lot of things that they're, that they provide in the city. And so, that I see, I see them already start doing that. Whenever I get the opportunity to jump in and start watching the meeting, which I have not been watching it so much, you know? And for me, I was always on the outside. I, I've worked for Tamarack Park and Rec for over almost 15 years, doing cooking classes, doing family-oriented programs, always working with them on that. So, now for me to be on the inside, I, I did go to Tamarack University and started to learn more about, you know, the government part of it. And so, that's my, my idea is going in and just, just taking a look. But I think the biggest thing when it comes to being a commissioner, the biggest thing is to listen to the people, is to be there for the people. And that's what I hear a lot knocking on doors. I call and this was not, we have a team of people. I see that Tamarack has a team of people that they can work with, okay? They have a team of people. So, they sit down with these team of people to see what's going on in their city, to hear the complaints of the people. And, and I think that for me, that's what a commissioner's job is supposed to be. And to bring back whatever they, they hear about to, to, to be a part of the school, to be a part of nonprofit, that's what I'm gonna do as a commissioner.
Right. And also to have an open door. Because one of the other things that I hear a lot of people complain about is that, you know, when they were trying to get me to vote for them, they were in my face all the time, you know? They were at every meeting and, "We gonna do this and we gonna do that." You know, they give out their phone numbers and...
Yes.
It would've been a Google number for the purposes of... So, do you, you, you said right before you came on that you were, you know, outside of the hot sun, you know, reaching out to the constituent? Is that what you're gonna continue to do? Are you gonna continue?
What I know is missing, what I see that is missing is the connection to people. And I think that's also one of the reasons I'm running. There is definitely a disconnection between government and the people. I, I, I knocked on a lady's door yesterday and she, day before yesterday, Saturday, and she says, "What are you doing in a raid?" I'm like, you know, because I was, all of my signs was ripped down. Every single one of them on, in the main of Kremet. I had five signs down on Saturday. And so, I had to go back and put all of them back up. Some of them were broken up, some of them were destroyed. And I'm talking about, it broke my heart because these people donate these signs and some of these signs are $125. Some of them are 95, 108. They're very expensive signs. See them destroyed, was breaking out. But I was talking to the lady and she said she had a problem with flooding and the drain wasn't working. And she literally told me, I asked her if she would, you know, say this. But I know one of the things that we always try to do is to make, people call it negative. I don't think it's negative when you are showing what's not done in the community. They say you're being negative, you're talking negative. No, I'm not. I'm just saying, this is the reason I'm running because these people are saying, she said she had the drain and she called a year. She said the first time someone came out was in February.
And she'd been calling for a year.
And she's been calling for one year. She, in February, someone came out and they didn't get anything done because then COVID happened and she said it's still there, the flood is still there. But I'm not, that's one of the things that I hate is that you go out there, you find the money, you find the time to knock on these doors and you go out there and then that, nobody sees you again. Nobody sees you until it's time for voting. And that, that, that is really something that I know. It wasn't on one of my goals, but that's a big thing. Not that I'm knocking these doors and seeing that. That's a big thing is that we have this huge disconnect between the city and between government and the people.
Yeah, and a lot of times people that are in government, they figure they already know what y'all want. There's a, "We know what you want," you know? It's just like the school board. People to find out what it is that they want or need, right?
Exactly.
That's definitely, you know, again...
Just like the school board. The school board always asking professional people on what they need. Why don't you ask the students? You know, when I talk to the students, they're like, "This is what we need. Why don't they do this?" They are bright people and they know what they need. It's the same thing for our resident. Our resident know what we need, but we don't have a way to connect. We only connect when it's time for our vote. And, and it, this is why I'm going through this chomongous use of stress because it's a lot of stress and you have to know how to control it. And even though a lot of people say, "Well, it's a lot of stress when you, with stress when you run for commissioner, when you're in the seat." You know, it's different when you're running than when it's different when you're working, when you have a team of people working with, you know? You have a team of people that you're working with. It's completely different. The stress now is that you may have a team, but most of these teams are volunteer. And you get volunteer team, these people are getting paid. And if you can work with every department cohesively to see what the people need in the city, then that's, that's what you need to do. And this is what I'm finding that's not connected. It is very hard to connect with the residents in your cities.
And why do you think it's hard? Why is it, do you think they're just not interested in doing it or like, why is it hard?
I think that's number one, they don't trust anymore because nobody wants to vote anymore. That's one of the things that I find, nobody wants to vote anymore. People are, they've lost hope. And so, for me, I'm not, I, I think that I can bring back a small hope in our community by, by my actions. And I need the opportunity to do that. I need the opportunity to try to bring back some hope to some of these residents. Because I've lost hope.
Okay. So, one of the things that you mentioned in your intro was that the demographics of Tamarack is changing, right? What do you think you need to do to, um, to bring together the traditional residents of Tamarack and, uh, and a new, the change in demographic of Tamarack? What, what do you think needs to happen? Is there any shift, any change, anything you, anything different that needs to come to the city to acknowledge this diverse group? Or can Tamarack continue to operate the same way even though the demographic...
Well, Tamarack is one of the things that I see, and, and again, and I don't know what kind of hit I'm gonna take for this, but I'm being honest and I'm telling the truth. This is what I said to my voters. You can't, there's, one of the things that I see that's trying to go on here, which I don't think makes sense, I think it's just the addict. I, I know that everybody have their national holiday. But how about instead of spending so much of the taxpayers' money, having so many different celebration? How about just having one big celebration of everybody's culture? You know, that's what I, that's what I mean because they spend thousands of dollars on individually, uh, recognizing every culture. So, this is how the taxes go up too because they're spending a lot of money on these things. So, why can't we all, we're all talking about coming together. So, why can't we all just make one big, just make one big thing on this day? And over here, we have this and over here, we have this. We have a mixture of music. We have a mixture of food. We have a mixture of everyone.
Yeah, okay. That's definitely, um, one of the, um, one ways that can be done. But you know, people are gonna be like, "Alright, so you wanna have this old multicultural day? When is it gonna happen? Is it gonna be closer to like Jamaica Independence Day? Is it gonna be..."
Well, that's something that the city have to pick up because...
Like whose day you gonna pick for this party to happen, right?
But you know what? Right now, the city have something that they have the Taste of Tamarack and they, they had a multicultural lady. They just started that. I think last year was the first one. And it, it, it was a different city coming together. And also, even the Taste of Tamarack is different food, is different food, is different culture. It's different. And so, that's something that the community, that, that the commissioners is gonna have to say because there's no way they can ask the community to do that. And maybe they can just put a, pick a day that doesn't have anything to do with any, any day.
Anybody, right?
The cultural day because honest to God, this is how, I'm a single mother. I've always, I, I, since I got my divorce, I've been a single mom raising my son by myself. I've owned my own home and I go to school. I got my master's degree, just me. My son goes to school now in Texas, he's in college. I run my home, okay? Paying my mortgage and, and getting my education and raising my son. So, you know, seeing how to make sure that you sit down and, and it's just all a matter of planning. Sit down and discussing and plan and see how can this work? And it will not work if you can't get along. No one can tell me anything. I've watched Nancy Pelosi, even Nancy Pelosi, Nancy Pelosi. But I've watched her and our president just head to head. And what do we get done? What do we get done with both of them are like that? Just, you know, there have to be somebody in office where you can sit down and have a logical conversation with common sense.
Alright, I'm not gonna comment on trying to have a conversation with the president. I would just let that one go. I'm, I'm gonna stay out of that, right? That's like a, that's like a black hole to me. So, I'm not gonna, how you, you know, have a sensible conversation with somebody that I think don't really have a lot of sense, right? But there's a question from the audience, right?
Yes.
Ms. Pickler is asking, "How will you connect with the residents? What are some of the action steps that you plan on taking?"
One of the biggest thing that I see that I'm gonna do is right now, I've connected with a lot of them. I'm not gonna send them out 100 texts. One of the things I wanna do with the resident, I really don't wanna say it because I think people will steal my idea. How I can connect with the resident, I really do. I honestly see that it's just a matter of getting into the community, the small community. But I have several ways that I've already thought of. And I'm sorry that I can't give it to you, but I do know several ways that I thought of since I've been knocking doors. I go, "Wait a minute, well, we can do this. You know, we can have this here. We can do this. I can do this." Well, wait a minute, this lady says, "Well," I said, "Just look for it." And one lady says, "I don't know anything about Google, but sometimes we get the Tamarack Talk, okay?" Even Tamarack has gone through a lot to also have their people connected with them, but the older people really don't, they can't. But Tamarack has an app that says Tamarack to Go. And they have, I think they have the Tamarack Talk that comes out every three months. But all that stuff, sometimes people don't look at it. So, I think it's more of connection with people. And so, I've come, I've, since I've been knocking doors and talking to people, I've seen several ways where I, myself, as a commissioner, can connect with the people. Other from the, um, other from the big events where the commissioners are on stage and, and they wave or they say hello or there's some commissioner goes around and talks to the people. You know, that's another way to get to talk to them.
I live in the city of Miramar. I, I commission, listen, they do stuff all the time.
I see them. I see them.
We don't play, my, our commissioners...
I see them.
Always doing stuff. Everybody sending you emails. They got signs on the streets. They always have this stuff. Even with COVID, they've still find ways to interact and keep involved. So, I understand how important it is for the elected officials to be part of the community because I live in a very special city. Like our people, they're doing their thing. I know they're definitely...
And Tamarack is a very special city. Tamarack is really a very special city. And that's what, I, I, that's how I wanna keep it. I really, and then now looking at, um, looking at the commission board, you know, we have two African-American males, which is the first time in, in 57 years, 58 years, we have two African-American male. I don't think that any commission board should have all one race. I honestly don't. I think that there should be a mixture of race in the community to understand the demographic of the people that's there. Now, if we have a predominantly African-American, a predominantly white area, then it's a different, but when we get into that, we need to make sure that we have commissioners that are representing each culture. Because regardless to what we're saying and regardless to what we wanna, we wanna connect, regardless to we wanna all be at one, we are still all different culture and we still are different people that eat different food, that does different things, that see different, that have different upbringings, have different, um, way of, um, understanding things. We're still that. And so, learning to respect each other's culture is one of the things that I've realized that it's not. You, you know, they may say we have Jamaican Day or we have Haitian Day or, you know, Latin Day, we, all this. But do we really get to understand the culture? You know? And I think when people say, "Well, a lot of people are, there's a lot of interracial relationship." That doesn't mean that we know how to get along. That just, that doesn't. It doesn't mean that we know how to get along. It means that when people getting married, that's... But I don't think we get along as a culture. I really don't. I think we're just starting to learn just now.
Right. And we can, we can definitely do better. There's a lot of, um, there's a lot of room to go. And sometimes people just say, "Well, you know, because of maybe a lot of interracial couples, they're like, "Well, look at this, what's happening? Everyone's getting along." I mean, those two people might be getting along, but is there really some understanding for, that's for the greater community, you know?
Exactly.
Talk about something a little different.
Um, yes.
Policing. Is Tamarack one of the cities that, um, BSOs, their police officer? Do they have their own police department?
No, they're part of BSO.
They're part of BSO? And, uh, because I, I talk, again, I talk to people from different cities and there's some cities that are having some issues with BSO. So, how is that? Are you, will you guys continue to work with BSO? Or is it something that you're trying to do differently?
Well, the last meeting that we were all at, uh, there was a lot of people that was saying that, that they need to have their own. For me, I, I, I don't, I can't really comment on that right now because it's not something that I'm inside seeing. So, to comment on it, but there is some discussion about it. And the commissioners did have a meeting about, and there were some people that were in the meeting that really did think that we should really go back and have our own instead of being a part of BSO.
Uh, being a part, okay, instead of being...
So, but for, as for the police department, that's, I've worked with the police department, you know, when it comes to certain programs. I've worked in the juvie system for seven years in Miami. I work with a, a drug rehabilitation place called Here Is Help. And my job was to rehabilitate people, young men. I work with young men from the, young men and adolescents from the ages 12 to 26. And my job was to rehabilitate them, put the ones back in the community to work, give them a certificate, teach them, um, entrepreneurship, teach them something that they can do that provide an income for themselves and also, you know, just give back to society. And so, working with that, seeing that, I've, I've seen a lot of things that is in the, the system that is not implemented. A lot of programs, especially being on the, on the Broward School Board. I'm on the Broward School Diversity Board. I serve on that board. This is gonna be my third year serving on that board, which has been an eye-opener for me. It's just been, now that itself is another thing. Everybody is like, "Why didn't you run for school board member?" Because you don't get anything done. I don't wanna be a part of that, you know? Um, so for me, being a part of the board where I actually go in and visit the schools and see the schools and write a report and we have a meeting with, 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 um, the people that appointed us. And we also get to, to go to these meetings and say, this is what we're seeing and comparing these schools and the filter, some of our children go to school in and the stuff that's going on there. This is, this is what I've been going through for the last three years, being a part of that. And it's been such an eye-opener to me. That's another reason why I was, wanted to run for commissioner. Because I think with me, I, this is what I say to myself, maybe I'll have a bigger voice. You know, people with learning disabilities, the same thing. You know, it's just, that's another reason I wanted to do that. Uh, there's so many things when it comes to the, 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 the programs or the police officers. There's coffee with a cop, ride a bike. There is, you know, so all these program has been there, they're not new programs, they've always been there, mentoring, they've been there, you know, um.
Are they, are they getting anything done, right? Are they, I mean, it could be there in name, but isn't there an execution?
Thank you, but they're not being implemented. And I, I, I now see them implementing them. You know, I now see that the Broward Sheriff's Office has a lot of program that they're really starting to implement it. And these, when you say to people, oh, they're bringing out this new program, it's not a new program, that program is already there. There, it's just that it's not being implemented. And if it's not being implemented, then it's just sit there for, um, to be in the file to say that the program is there, you know?
Doing anything with it.
I, I know a lot of people don't like people that speaks up. And I know a lot of people always try to shut you down when you're not controlled by them. I know that, but for me, I, I just think that we can't go anywhere in life until we really speak the truth.
You know, squeaky door gets the oil, that's all.
I, that, that's, that's, that's true, that's very true.
You know what I mean? All right, so one of the other things I kinda, I think I might have heard it from a little birdie or something like that, was that the city of, um, one of the commissioners had introduced something about Black Lives Matter on the, um, commission. And my understanding was it didn't pass. I don't know if they wanted a referendum or just want the city to make a statement about Black Lives Matter. Is that something that you're familiar with or is it something, um, and if that issue does come up again, is that something that you would support for the city to make a statement on a black, on Black Lives Matter?
What, what, for me, I've been watching this and I do, I did hear that and I did hear that, um, it was funny because I'm not gonna say which commissioner here, but I do know that, um, one of the commissioner, I think it's because people don't really understand what Black Lives Matter means. I think they think that we're saying that no, you know, just our life matters. So I've heard that a lot, is saying, well, all life matters, not just your black life. And that's not what black life, I, what Black Lives Matter, it's just that equal justice for all. For me, what, what I think, what I would work within the city when it comes to Black Lives Matter is again, the cultural understanding of each other. And to make sure, I don't, I don't know what it is that they wanted to pass, I can't, I can't, um, you know, I can't, I'm looking for a word, I can't, I can't talk about that because I really don't know, um, what it is that they wanted to pass. But I know that the conversation did come up about having, is it, is it, um, a day or something like that that represents?
Wanted them to make a statement, you know how like when, when, right after George Floyd had had pa, had pa, um, had passed, I mean, was, was killed, um, basically, um, a lot of those companies and cities, they were like, you know, they made the statement. They made a statement that they're in support of Black Lives Matter. You know, I mean, I was getting emails from like all different type of places. I mean, there were some companies that gave people June 10th off, right? You know, and.
Yes, yes.
A movement, right? So a lot of companies, even though they never, you know, they might have had a diversity statement or something like that, you know? But then they specifically said that, you know, we're in support of the Black Lives Matter movement. So I believe maybe the referendum was something to that effect to say.
Okay, to state it, to say that Black Lives Matter. Well, I, I personally know that my son, my son, my baby, um, matters. And every single day, I worry about him. I worry about my son since the day he was born until now, especially now that he's not. I have nightmare about my son and he's a male, he's an African-American male. And it's not just, I've seen, uh, there was a young man from Harvard that was shot, uh, that went to Harvard. You, I, you saw that. So it's not like they're stereotyping, uh, one particular person with here or this, it's just black in general, you know? That has been very visual. And for me, as a black mother, I see that. But I think one of the thing that, um, I'm gonna say that, that, that other culture need to understand is that it's truly, and I think they're starting to see that now, but it's truly that we have been, um, overlooked, killed. Um, opportunity have passed us only because the color of our skin.
Yeah.
I say, and me, I, I'm as, I, I mean, I, I come from Connecticut, I mean, for crying out loud. You know, I'm a, I'm, I'm in Connecticut where, for me, I've never, to tell you the honest truth, I never experienced racism, the very first time of me experience racism when I went to Jamaica. I'm in Connecticut, I don't know if they showed it to me, but I never really, cuz I, I never really, I, I mean, I've never really seen it. I've never been a part, I've never had someone say, um, this because I'm black. I had a white girlfriend and I went to her house and they go, you know, they would say things like, um, and at that time, I'm like, oh, those, not all black people are like that, you hear things like that. But never once anyone would say to me, um, you're not gonna do this because you're black. And never, never I felt like I was treated that way. But now that I'm older and I'm in the world and I see it, but my very first time of experience racism was in my own country, Jamaica.
Wow, that's, that's interesting. And sometimes like, well, what happens, at least as an adult, uh, you, you, things were racist, things were kinda happening, right? But you couldn't recognize it, right? And it's not like you're really necessarily making everything about race, but there's some things where you, you know, that you, when you think about it in retrospect, you're just like, oh, my God. So I went to high school in Miami, like my parents are from Haiti, I was born in the Bahamas, but I've been here since I was like five. So I'm, you know, I'm probably more American, well, I'm culturally Haitian cuz I grew up in a house with Haitian parents and there's no way you come out of that house and you're not culturally Haitian.
Exact, just like there's no way you come out of the house and not culturally Jamaican.
You know, you just, you just Haitian cuz you can't, you grew up in their house. But you know, in turn, but, but I also recognized that when I went outside and any room that I walked into, nobody don't care that I'm Haitian or Bahamian or this, they just saw a black woman walk up in their room, right? But one of the points that I wanted to make is when I was in college, we were learning about the glass ceiling, we were learning about a glass ceiling. And the school that I went to, they literally, the ceiling was literally made of glass, right? And sometimes, you know, like at the time, you're not thinking about it, it doesn't mean, you, so it was like you could see it, but you're not, are you gonna really make it through? Cuz I went to, uh, inner-city high school, all of that stuff. And if you weren't part of like, if, you know, they had a good honors AP program, whatever. So if you came out of those programs, you did, you know, you were, they took care of us, like the honors AP students, we pretty much got what we needed in order for them to move forward. But if you were one of the average students there, you know, you know, I don't know, you, it was kinda like, you might make it, you might not, well, no, right? But one of, but that was one of those things that when I became old and I understood the glass ceiling, I was like, you know, we're put in situations and then they also had bars around my school, that's like a whole nother thing. Would they have done that to a school that was not ninety-six percent black? I seriously doubt that, right? So we're, sometimes we're part of a racist system and because of our, uh, uh, maturity, awareness, we don't realize it, right? We don't realize it. So I'm not saying that you probably never experienced any racism, but for me, I thought that, yo, it's all good. And then you, when you know, when you're able to look back and then you could put things in context, you realize that people literally did have their foot on your neck, right? And despite of that, you were able to accomplish a lot more. So, cuz I'm not gonna act like I'm some victim cuz.
Yeah, let me, let me tell you how I can look back and recognize that.
But that, that, but that, but you know, people had foot on my neck, but I also had like a village that was kind of helping me get up too, right? Maybe I could have gone a lot further, I don't know. But these, a lot of times, these things are happening, but the part that, what makes it so hard is because it's so insidious and it's so like on a low-low, right? That's, to me, that's when it's even more dangerous than when a person just straight up come out and call you out of your name or something.
Yeah, but for me, I think when I recognize it, I was in a lot of At Risk Youed programs. That's how I start working with At Risk Youed. Um, at the age of fifteen, I was put into, uh, um, I, I just, I was very bad kid. I did a lot of, you know, I had a lot of issues. And so I had a lot of issues at home, so I had a lot of issues at school. Uh, not only that, but I have learning disability, so I was in special ed. And being in special education, you get teased a lot and, and I was different, I was really different ever since I known myself. So I had a lot of anger, I mean, I used to fight all the time. So they put me in a program one summer and, and that summer I taught, um, kids to play soccer. And, and that's what I did. And that was kind of a therapist for me. So looking back now and see that because I didn't, I didn't understand it and I didn't see it, which was probably a good thing, that, oh, because then you don't recognize it, really is. Because for me, walking into a room, I don't care. I don't care about what people see you do, I know I go in there with my knowledge. And I'm there, so I don't really look for it because that's issues. I always feel that way, right? And I'm very happy I grew up that way. I grew up like this, I love me. I truly honest to God love everything about me.
Right.
I mean, I love, I love my hair, I love the, the, my skin color. I mean, I got a couple pounds off that I can drop off, but I totally love who I am. So I've never really looked at that and I've never really paid attention to it until when it start being like really in my face was when I was going to college, when I start looking for a job in the system, when I work in the school system, when, um, and then the thing about it is I've always had positions that, no, you should not be there. What are you doing there? My first job was at Atlantic Tech and I taught the front of the house. There's never been a teacher there that, you know, um, my age.
Hmm.
It says taught that, that class. I'm teaching the brain of culinary.
Right.
Where's this little girl come from? And that was right out of the Art Institute, I started teaching, um, at Atlantic Technical. And a lot of people couldn't understand. And it was a struggle for me, it really was, it was a fight for me constantly said, I can't understand this. And it was just starting to see that I'm really out in the world and I'm really starting to see that, the, the bias. Um, and, and I, and I'm saying, okay, so this racism thing is really, you know, and, and that's when I really start seeing it. It's just when I got into the world of working and I got into the world of, I, I personally, when I personally started my cooking classes and my cooking program in Tamarack, I had a lot of problem with being overlooked a lot of times, all the time. And that was different, that was many years ago.
Hmm.
I had that. So then I saw the community start changing and the, 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 um, before, I never forgot the, um, mayor that was there, uh, I think a while back, her name was Beth Talabisco. She was the first woman that walked up to me and says, you know, you're doing such a great job in our city and, and I thank you. It was so, it's like, wow, it was, it was like, wow, you know? It's very like, wow. And then to have them support me in the Boys and Girls Club when I was outstanding woman, they made donation in my name. When they've always been, after that, you know, um, a few of the mayors and commissioners have been very supportive of me in the community. But it took a while for them to do that, it really did. It, it, I'm not gonna lie to you. That's where I start seeing that there's really a problem with our, our co, uh, really a problem with our world. Well, someone like me that has so much knowledge and that could be such a, um, such a, a gift to the community and you really wasn't seeing it. You weren't seeing the programs that I was bringing to you because of the color of my skin. You won't see in my knowledge of culinary, my knowledge of food, my knowledge of health, my knowledge of people because of the color of my skin. And I still, until this day, because of my learning disability, even an article, somebody, um, mentioned in one of, um, an article, well, can she run the city because she has a learning disability? Well, can I get my master's degree because I have a learning disability? Stuff like that just really just gets me because the, the constant, and then I had that to deal with. My learning disability was another thing because I was a freak, I was a weirdo because I read differently, because I see things differently, I'm a freak, I'm a weirdo. And so all of this stuff makes me want to be a part of the city, makes me wanna show the city that it doesn't matter what color you are, what your learning disability is, as long as you're a good and honest person and you care about your community and, and, and you, I know, all of us don't have to do things the same way. It's really, that's what it's come to.
And people are, well, you know, a lot of times when people hear the word diversity, they always think that, oh, that just means that you need to ask somebody black or that means that you need to ask a woman. That's not what it is, it's really that you need to bring people with diversity and experience, right? You know, either way they grew up. And the fact that you're a person that, um, that has like a learning disability or whatever it is, that's another asset to the community. Cuz I have a daughter that's on the spectrum, right? My daughter's on the spectrum and, you know, and people are always trying to find ways to put limitations. And you're an example of like, you know, you can have these things or you can have these labels and you're able to overcome them and you can still be a part, a productive member of society. Then you may have like an understanding of people with special needs, um, just because of your experience. And that needs to be there because, you know, uh, uh, right now, the numbers of children on the spectrum is like one in fifty-nine. When I first heard about it, it was like one in twenty-five, you know what I mean? So the, and, and, you know, and these children are becoming adults now. They need to be part of, you know, the city, they need to be able to get employment and go to school and all those different things. So it, uh, to me, I think it would be important to bring someone in that has all kind of diversity and experience, not just in race and.
And that, and that I do.
And, and that, and that type of thing. So there's another question that.
And I work with a lot of kids, um, I've worked with a lot of adults with autism, they're bright. They're bright kids, I mean, you just have to find the right job for them. I've signed so many of them to find jobs for and it's been like, you know, this person is good at this, but don't make them do this and this is their weaknesses. It's.
Right, they're superpower and that's it, that you gotta, they all, they have their own superpower, you just gotta figure out how to connect, figure out.
Exactly, exactly.
And you're good, they're gonna, they're gonna do that. But we do have another question, they say, what are your plans to support, um, businesses in the community, um, in the city of Tamarack?
That's a very good question, I love this question.
Well, you know, how we gonna do that?
I love this question. Listen, right now, right now, majority of my in, um, in-kind donation comes from small businesses in the city of Tamarack. I am one of the biggest supporter of small business in Tamarack. What I can, what I'm gonna continue doing in Tamarack is that I'm gonna continue to spend my money with these small business people. I'm gonna continue to do that, I'm gonna continue. I think another thing that they don't know is like when some of these grant comes out for their business, when some of these small business loan comes out with, um, with, uh, it's information to them. But the biggest thing is to continue to support their businesses because right now, they're supporting me so much, so much. From, I mean, I can call names, but I'm afraid a lot of them, you know, um, but they're just, oh, my God. The out, the, the outreach of the small businesses, the gas stations, the, the, the jewelry stores, the printing companies, the food, that, I mean, it has just been overwhelming, the in-kind donation that I've been getting from them, honestly. And it's for me, is making sure that I shop in Tamarack, I keep my money in Tamarack as much as I can. And that's how I do it, plus I tell them about different things, plus I kind of in internet, like I say, oh, man, you gotta go there to do your business, you gotta go here. I am the, if you ask any business, most of these business, I recommend people to every business that I shop at and go at.
And, and word of mouth, and I'm a fan of word of mouth cuz I basically built my law practice on a word of mouth. So I, 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 that, that strength, cuz you know, cuz the, especially if the people, um, respect you and you give that referral. I mean, and a lot of time, that's, that's just more than any print advertising or anything like that, so that's.
Yes, and that's what I find that works for me is like supporting their business by sending people there, supporting their business by buying from them, supporting their business by always saying, you know what? I know somebody that can probably do that cheaper for you. And I am, I'm a connector, that's what I am. If anybody, you could interview a hundred people, they'll say Chef Jones, she'll just tell you, I am quick to give out information. I'm not one of those people to hold on to information because I think it's no good being in here. I think it's good helping people. So I'm quick to tell you where to go, I'm quick to tell you about VR, I'm quick to tell you about the services that need, that's there for you that you don't know about.
You know, vocational rehab, is VR vocational rehab? Cuz you just dropped some initials and I'm not sure if people know what.
Vocational rehabilitation, yes.
Okay, so we just want to people informed, right? Okay, so the other thing is like, I'm not sure what the housing breakup is, um, breakdown is in Tamarack. Is it a city of renters, homeowners or whatever? Um, we, you know, there's a moratorium on evictions right now because again, you know, we had this COVID, people can't pay their bills. You know, if you get elected, you're gonna be dealing with a, uh, I, I don't know if it's gonna be a mess. I mean, but how, how you gonna deal with that to make it not a mess? Cuz housing is a real, um, in a lot of cities, homelessness is a real issue in Broward County, what are we gonna do with this?
Right now, I have two people that are, um, that are homeless in, in, um, that are homeless in, in my, you know, that, that is homeless and I know personally right now myself that I'm trying to help. And that I'm trying to help. So, um, one of my goal, uh, if you see my goal, one of my goal is, I, I go through a lot of elderly people losing their homes. So this is not new to me.
Hmm.
Um, you know, people being homeless is not new to me, it's something that I've seen every single day. I'm trying to find, I even started a program, um, but it wasn't, it didn't come true yet because I don't have a building for it. But I wanted to do it in my own home, which was another problem and, and different issues, is to find, get some of these homeless people off the street. Um, because I know a few of them right now living in their cars and, and, and I'm, I'm, I'm working on help, getting some help for them. But one of my goal in the city of Tamarack is to get, we're building a lot of single-family homes here and they're building a lot, but what they don't have here, if they have one or two, I don't know. I do know that they have a lot of condominiums that are owned by, you know, elderly people, but not everybody can do that. Some of these, some of these places are rented. So my, my goal is to have homes in Tamarack for, um, for, uh, the elderly people. That's what, it's senior, more senior, and HUD have some beautiful senior homes in, 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 well, I've seen them in West Palm Beach when I was working with Simply Healthcare. I've gone to some of them and some of them are beautiful, just, just seeing. And one lady said, told me she paid three hundred dollars for rent, you know, which doesn't, this lady, I have a lady that lives, uh, where, where I am with my mom and she got thrown out because our landlord had so much lean on the place that, 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 that the association took it over and she had nowhere to go, you know, she had no money to go because the rent was so high. So my thing is that, is that it's not new to me, what's going on, how we are going to try to help. I do know that Tamarack has, um, Rental Assistant, it came out twice. I've seen it and I've also shared it with people on my page. I'm not sure if it's all gone now, but I do know that they have that. Um, how the government is going to do this, I think it's city by city that they can continue to get this money from the government to, um, supplement them, that's, that's the only thing I can, I can say when it comes to that. Because there is going to be a lot and it's gonna be very overwhelming, it is.
Yeah, cuz a lot of.
Just trying my, especially for the elderly people, it's just, I can't, uh, I, it's, it's not even the situation that I'm, that I'm, when it comes to the COVID matter. Well, it's a situation that I've been in when, because I work in the, in the system. And when I work in the system, I see single mom, people will call me, Michelle, this girl is being sexually abused, how can we get her out of this house? Can you help us? Uh, my daughter, you know, just things. And, 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 and it breaks my heart when I can't do anything to help because, you know, as, as, as a woman that's gone through that myself, not be able to help somebody that, that's going through that is heartbroken for me.
Yeah, it's definitely, I'm gonna be challenging. Okay, so.
It's going to be.
I grew up here, if you don't have a car, you can't get anywhere. What's the transportation like in Tamarack and, um, are, you have any plans on improving that? Cuz it's like, wait on that bus, it's gonna take all day.
You know what? My mom can testify to that, Tamarack have their own, their own bus.
Okay.
Wonderful. It drop her right in front of her house, right there, and she take it everywhere, these little buses. And it's so good to have that cuz she don't need me, she just be gone. Like you trying to find my mom, she's somewhere. Tamarack have their own bus line that takes you around their city, even from Kings Point, all of these places have their own, all of Tamarack. Tamarack have their own bus line, they have that. And I know I'm really there to stop it and it's fifty cents. I don't know if it went up, but for the seniors, I can, you know, find it for my mom. I see the fifty cents or twenty-five cents, I know it's something like that.
And it's, and if it's like, because another thing that happens is a lot of people can't, um, live where they work, right? Cuz housing is expensive in South Florida. Um, I know they have the buses that go around, but is, is it like where, if someone's working in Tamarack, they'll be able to like get on that bus and actually get to work or does it just take them to Publix and to like CBA?
No, no.
Or something like.
You have the Broward Transit buses that runs because my son used to take, I teach my son to take the bus. Uh, that was what, something that I wanted him to learn how to do. And to tell you the honest truth, he took one bus from Northeast High School and he got off. All these buses are literally running. Um, I think they run every half an hour, every, every, uh, depends on where it is. He was a bus junkie. He's like, Mom, don't pick me up, I got it, I'm taking the bus home because it was. He's like, Mom, don't pick me up. I got it. I'm taking the bus home because it was something I wanted, his independence, because not all the time I was able to pick him up. And if he had practice, he's like, Mom, I can't get a ride home from coach. Well, jump on the bus. You know, so he had his bus pass, he get on the bus, it drop him right there, he walk down the street. So we do have a great, um, we, I I personally. I have only taken the bus when I just came to Florida many, many years ago and I'm working Lotta Hill. And and that bus for me was just getting out of my apartment and taking the bus. I really don't see the problem with the um with.
Okay, good. So the other, so the other thing that we talked about and we're gonna get ready to wrap it up, it was so much good information from here. Is climate change is a big thing, right? And I know like um some of the cities are on septic, some of the cities, they're older. And the pipes are old and a lot of people are worrying about these old pipes not getting replaced cuz it's gonna mess with the water system. Are you familiar with any of the environmental um things that are going on? What are, are there, are there any concerns about?
I know, and I hear it from a lot of the neighbors about, you know, one of the things that I hear from a lot of the neighbors is the drainage system. The drainage system is ten in Tamarack and the water, we have a lot of water issues here. And that's something that I know some people will say, water is not, and I, I was trying to figure out what they mean with hard water and soft water. And so.
Waters for real.
Yes, I didn't know it was until I got, until I went to Tamarack University and literally listened to the water people about hard water and soft water. Which was absolutely crazy to me. So I know the water system here because I've seen my mom, they've shut down water so many times. We have pipes that busted so many times. And I know that the city of Tamarack is working on that and that's what's gonna cost a lot of money too. To um to replace a lot of these water issues that's going on here. We do have that problem here. So, and I know that the city, that's one of their biggest challenge right now.
Yeah, okay, so that, so that's one of the things, so um that's one of the environmental concern. Is there anything else um that you wanna tell the people before we um wrap it up?
And why? What I do know, a lot of the people are um, uh the solar system, I, I was knocking doors today and I see a lot of solar system going on in new houses. That are being built. And I think that's, that's a big supporter for Tamarack also is I I see, I was like, wow. There was this solar going down and they were putting on these big things on the roof. And I see a lot of homes in Tamarack, a lot of the new homes in Tamarack are doing that now. And that's something that I know is going to help. We are, I know they have also. Um, I think one of the commissioner, one of the 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 women commissioner. We are now in Tamarack, most of the businesses that are selling, they're now using. Um, I think pa- um paper straws.
Yes, yes.
Other straws that they're using. So I do know they're making small changes um when it comes to that and 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 the environment. I see that.
Yeah, cuz some people are using paper straws, some things are no straws. You can actually buy metal straws now that you know, that you can um use to travel with or whatever. Because there um, there's a movement to get rid of all that plastic, you know?
Yes.
I know there's also an issue a lot, um cuz I, there's another um person I spoke to that's running for solid water. And one of the things that they're trying to do is like encourage people to recycle. And not only recycle, recycle in a proper way, right? Because people are just throwing everything in a blue bin. Um, and then it's not all really recyclable. So a lot of time and money is being spent for them to sort out like what's, what you can really recycle and and what you can't recycle. Because it is an added cost to a lot of the cities. So do you plan on having or is educating people on on really recycling? Of being energy efficient, one of the things that you wanna do?
Um, I think that's also something that I know for sure is a problem here because I see the city spend. Money on trying to get people to recycle. I've seen them put out the bins. Newspaper, glass bottles, they literally mark the bins, you know? Um, wha- what else I think that they can actually do is work with the, again, it's, I think it's more working with the supermarkets. Honestly, cuz people really being in the community and knocking on the door, some people just really don't care. They just throw it in the garbage. They honestly don't care. And so we can't, we can only control the city. We can't control the people in it. We can only control, we can only work together um with different companies and how we can better that. Well, we can't control people. And that's another thing that's very hard. We can't control the people when it's, you know, we don't see when the people are throwing the stuff in the garbage. Even though I'm here and I see that downstairs, we have newspaper, we have boxes, we have stuff for all paper, we have stuff for all glass, we have stuff for that. And I've seen some people go down there and do it, but some people just don't do it. They just don't. And so, um, I think it's more working with the individual, working with the companies in store, more working with, cuz I've seen the city personally, myself. As a resident, see the city bring us garbage can. I know we pay for it in our taxes. But they bring us the blue garbage can and the different colors for recycling. And they do it for all, even the apartments. I see they do it different, different ones in the apartments. And for residents, we have two garbage cans. We have the blue one, which is recycling, and the black one that's garbage. One go out one day, one go out the other day. We all garbage, I see the city work tirelessly to do that. And this is why a lot of our taxes are high. And then we are complaining about our taxes being high, but we are not helping the situation too. And it's again, accountability, not just to um to the city, but also to people.
Our neighbors and to our environment, to the future, to the children.
Yeah.
Right. All right, so tell us, if somebody wants to donate money to your campaign, if they wanna volunteer for your campaign, how can they get in touch with you to do?
Oh, just click on my website. Oh my god, you can't miss me. I, I mean, I I got my chef jacket on and everything. Just listen. Go to my website, click on my link. That link is there, look for Chef Michelle Jones, look for Michelle Jones. I need volunteers, really. I honestly and truly look at, I I'm talking to the world. I don't know how many viewers that you have, but I'm honestly asking you for a chance to really bring hope back to the community. To bring hope back, but not just Tamarack. Because when you see that there's a person that truly cares about the community. Then you will say, you know, you kind of bring the hope back, thinking that one would be in your community. There's not all, there's only good, there's good and bad people. And there's some people that really just go into politics for their own benefits. And there's truly some people that honestly love their, their, their community. And I can talk for myself that I truly love the city of Tamarack. And I truly need your vote and your support in becoming the next commissioner for the city of Tamarack for District One. Thank you for listening and God bless everyone.
Oh, thank you very much for that. Um, so you've given a reason why they should vote for you. Um, I don't think you said the website. What is it? Um? What's your?
Uh, it's, it's, it's Michelle Jones, um Michelle Jones Campaign at top, at, at gmail dot com.
Well, that's it. So Michelle Jones Campaign at gmail dot com is the email address. Are you Instagram, Twitter?
On Instagram, I am on Facebook, I am on, I'm on all of that. You could, if you just put in Mich- um. Google Chef Jones, Michelle Jones, you'll see me pop right up.
Okay, so she's on Instagram.
Right now, yes, and my link is right there. You click on my donation link and you make it. And if not, just call me and ask me, chef, seven five four three six eight thirty-eight sixty-four is my phone number. I really and truly need your help. I need your donation. My signs are being damaged every day. Uh, and and there's nothing I can do. Uh, I can't feed into, I honestly to God, don't have the energy to feed into people's um. This function, mind. And I, and I think it's like, you know, the the the, when you feed into the garbage that's going on, you give it power. So for me right now.
Distract you from your goal. And your goal is to get elected, so you don't distract it from your goal.
And I'm being distracted from my goal right now by my signs being ripped down. Yesterday, the other day, I spent almost all day, which I wanted to have my parade. And I spent all day putting up the sign. This morning, I'm driving again to the back. I see one of my sign ripped down again. So I'm constantly trying to have to do that. Thank god I have volunteers and thank god I'm a woman that pick up my, my hole digger and my shovel. And go out and put up my own sign. A lot of you may see me on the roadside putting up my own sign. I don't have the money, so I have to do the work. And so please, share this. Um, tell everyone that I'm running and I really need the opportunity to um. To bring back hope to our community. Please click on my link, make a donation. And our, our volunteer, our in-kind donation. A lot of my support comes from in-kind donation and small businesses. We can't have a party anymore. Restaurants usually have a party for me. Well, whatever you can do, I really appreciate it. And thank you again, Sandra, for giving me the opportunity to come on here and get to know the people more. And and just tell them I'm not just a cook. You know, that was what's going around is that I'm a cook. You know, and there's nothing wrong with being, I'm a cook first before I'm a chef. I'm a cook first before my mom.
All right, so the last thing I want you to do, I want you to tell the people about the importance of completing their census.
Oh my god, you have to, you have to. Uh, and I was just telling that to my mom and I was just helping my neighbor next door. And it's for, it's very important that you do it because for the next ten years, we need money in our community. That's what that census does. It counts and give us money. It gives us money for things that we need in our community. Okay, rec centers, all of these places, it gives us money. And if the counts are not right, we're not gonna get the right amount of money.
Exactly, it's for the police.
Very important.
And all of those emergency services. And I know, um, you were saying that you were talking a little bit about the demographics of the city. Um, that is changing. And one of the things is, uh, uh, particularly if there's an immigrant population there. I know a lot of times they're afraid to complete the census because they think if they fill it out, immigration's gonna come to their house and get them. And we also, we wanna educate them, let them know that this information is not shared with immigration or anyone. But we need, you know, everyone to fill it out, be counted because that's how they bring dollars into the city. That's how they determine who's gonna represent, how many representatives you're gonna have in DC. So it's very important, right, for them to.
Yes, yes. And 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 one of the things, Sandra, that I do get a lot in the community, again, why I really ask for everyone's support. Is that people have truly lost hope, even with the census. They're like, I don't give a damn about filling that out. That's, that's exactly what the lady says. She said, why am I gonna fill it out? What is doing for me? And I'm letting her know. It's like, it's protecting you, it's getting, it's gonna make sure you have enough money to do all the things that we need to do um in our city. It's gonna be the supplement that we need in our city. And she's like, I don't see them do nothing for me. My taxes is high and na na na. So, you know, she, that. There's people that truly lost hope. And I get this application.
Tell us she see the police officer, she see fire rescue, when she open that forces, that water is clear.
Exactly. Those are all the things for, and I tried to explain that to her. I said, a lot of time, people, a lot of time, people are like, um. One of the things that I know that I get here in in Tamarack is that they do not know how the city runs. They don't know about government. They do not know, cuz this faces, are you a Democrat or are you a Republican? I said, that doesn't really matter cuz when you call the city and ask for something, you're not gonna tell me that you're a Democrat or Republican. You're a resident.
Right.
I am a resident of Tamarack and I need, so when you guys are 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 saying, oh, I'm not gonna do this and I'm not gonna. Your commissioners don't, we're, we're, but we don't run on any parties, okay? We don't. We run for the people. Even though we all are different register, we all, whether we're Democrat or Republican. We do have commissioners that are Democrat, we do have commissioners that are Republican, but when we're running for party, we do not run with any. So just to let the people know that I's, I's always saying that they don't want to be this because you have to go out and vote for your community. Community, that's it. And the census is very important. Please fill it out. Um, and it has to be filled out. And I see people knocking on the door, somebody came here, knocking on the door and, um, you know, I told that George next door. And the all the older people that to fill it out, but they don't know how to fill that stuff out. And a lot of them don't. And a lot of things, what I'm seeing now, I don't know if you can do anything about it. A lot of times. Is that a lot of people don't understand some of the question because I was one of those people that did not understand some of the questions that are on the the ballot. We need some help with that. And that's something I'm gonna, I don't know how I can, I can have a relationship with the supervisor of election and how they fix those questions. How it works, but a lot of those questions, a lot of people don't understand them.
So that's not the supervisor election fault. I mean, we have, you know, we talked a little bit about the president and I said, I didn't wanna badmouth him. But he made it di- um difficult on purpose, right? Cuz he was even trying to put a citizenship question on the census that was litigated. And part of him doing that is what um um instilled a lot of fear in um a lot of immigrants from filling out the census. So that's, that wasn't with the SOE's office, that was um actually with the federal government and the president occupant. The president occupant of the White House made it difficult on purpose. But, you know, we digress. This is about you. So tell us your name and your um email address again, and I'm gonna let you have a last, not let you, you're, you're, you're gonna have the last word.
Okay, my email address, everyone. Uh, you can email me, I have two email addresses out there. One of them is very easy. Chef Michelle Jones at gmail dot com. And then I have the other one, Michelle Jones Campaign twenty twenty at gmail dot com. So you can go to, you can send me every information that you ever need on me. So to click on your finger, just tip on it. Hit, just type in my name, just Google, find me, Michelle. Google, find me, Michelle Jones, or Google, find me, Chef Jones. They'll pop up a lot, but you know me, you'll see, you'll see me in my chef uniforms. You'll see that I'm running for campaign and you click, uh, uh, that, you know, they make sure that every button that you click on have my um, my donation link on it. So please go and donate and please fill out the census and thank you for your support. And again. I, well, I I really appreciate you, Sandra, doing this. Uh, it'd be more to, please, one of the last thing I have to say. It is so important for you to do your research on the candidates that you are voting for. It is very, very important for you to click on this little phone here and you can talk to it now. And you can just say the person's name. You can just say, how many money did my commissioner spend on traveling last year? Girl, you get it. Just ask that question. Ask how many money, just ask. Ask can see if they own a resident here in Tamarack, are they just rented? Ask that if they pay taxes. Those are the things that you need to ask and find out. And when you find it for yourself, then it won't be negative information cuz you looked it up. Please make sure that you do your little, just talk to the phone, just ask the phone. The phone will tell you anything. And that's the wonderful thing about today's technology. And that's what we need to do, is make sure that you do your research and vote. Vote, vote like you've never voted before because your life truly depend on it. It's not that day. It is five years from now. It is ten years from now. We can't keep sending back our community and sending back our nation. We have to make sure that we go out and vote. And I know a lot of people are discouraged and have lost hope. But I'm telling you, if we, if we keep, if we do not go out and vote, it's just gonna get worse, okay? It's just going to get worse. So please go out and vote. Your vote matters and it counts.
It does. Thank you very much. Thank you.
And thank you to all my Facebook friends for tuning in and and listening to me and giving me the opportunity to come out and explain myself and talk about. You know, my belief and for you to just to get to know my personality. Even though a lot of you can just see that I've been in the community for years doing what I'm doing, it's not just today. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a good.
You're welcome. Okay, bye-bye.